In a pledge allegiance.
United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Camilla, could we have a rule call, please?
Mr. Francis, Mrs. Erwin Adams. Mrs. McGinnis.
Here.
Mr. Mignon.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Pacifico.
Here.
Mr. McCauley.
Here.
Mr. Pappas. Mr. Romanowicz.
Here.
All right. Sorry, my mouse isn't working. Um, at this time, do we have any citizens who would like to get up and speak to us? No, okay. We will move directly into finance, uh, under three. We have A, list of payments, B, twenty-four, twenty-five mansion park rental agreement with Bishop Gilfoyle, and C, Nolton diagnostic. Do I have a motion to approve these three items? Do I have a second? Would anybody like to discuss any of these items?
On, on the BG rental, uh, how many officers are we talking about? Uh, if the games are.
We typically have four.
Four, four, four bars.
Four bars, correct.
And one city.
No city.
There's just our guys.
Just our guys.
Anyone else? Okay. All in favor of approving items three, A through C, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Under item, yes.
Um, John asked, everyone does speak in their microphone. I guess he's having a hard time hearing while he's on the Zoom.
So we all need to turn our mic on when we speak, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Hey, slow down there, Romanowicz. All right. All right. So, under item four, we have several policies, um, and we went through these. We had a policy committee meeting not too long ago. I don't believe there's anything too controversial. Most of these, uh, the changes to these policies were, uh, due to changes in legislation or recommendations by, um, the Pennsylvania School Board Association. So, I will move, I'm sorry, I would ask somebody to make a motion to approve these, the final readings of these policies under item four A.
So moved.
Second? Anyone?
Second.
Would anybody like to discuss any of these items? There's a bunch of them. Okay. Looking for a mo-, or I'm sorry, looking for, uh, a vote, all in favor of item A, under section four, under all the policies, final reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Under education, item five, we have A, administration requests approval of the Deveraux Children's Behavioral Health Services Agreement, July one, twenty-two-four through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. We have the Pyramid, uh, Healthcare Soaring Heights Agreement, administration requests approval of the agreement with Pyramid Healthcare Soaring Heights School. And under item C, we have, uh, an impressive list of, uh, volunteers to approve, including former board members, teachers, current teachers, members of the audience, um, and many, many others. So we're appreciative having all these people willing to volunteer. Looking for a motion to, uh, to approve items five, A through C?
So moved.
Anyone like to second? I will. How about that? Um, I'll open up the discussion. I, I would just offer a suggestion for this board and future boards. All these agreements with these organizations who provide educational services like Deveraux, Pyramid, it'd be nice at some point, if we could, as board members, get a table that maybe lists these, um, relationships. A brief description of what that, what that relationship specifically covers, um, and the cost structure, if it's by day or by year tuition, because is, is, you know, since I spent my Sunday yesterday looking through these, I'm like, how many organizations do we contract with to provide services like this? And it's a long list, it seems. So it would be helpful to sort of see it in, uh, table form. Lay eyes on it in that manner and say, all right, this one's for that, and this one's for that, and maybe they're all for similar things.
Absolutely. And Michelle, I know we, we compile these in Michelle's department. Typically, these are students with IEPs. Um, not always, but there are ones that we contract with, like, for example, um, Soaring Heights is one of the more local ones where we do send. No, so what happens is, is they wind up being responsible for the education, and they bill us because we're responsible for the education, even though it's a student that might be in a medical placement or hospitalization, whatever it may be, whatever the billing institution and district, we want to, we have to have an agreement with them to be able to provide the education while they are there temporarily or possibly long term. But we can get that, we can absolutely put that together.
The other piece that would be important to know is like, this, like, how many kids, like, on average, are they serving a year? Just to give us some sense, you know, I saw, and I forget which one specifically, but the annual tuition's like seventeen thousand, five hundred, I believe, and that's.
I asked about that one today.
Okay. All right, so, I mean, it would just be helpful for us to be able to lay eyes on it, and, um, listen, I'm sure it's all needed, but we were elected to be informed, and it would be helpful to view that stuff.
Yeah, and a lot of times, we, we don't have a choice. For example, the one that we had spoken about earlier, and that will be coming up. That one is, that is, uh, court ordered, that we're required for that, to pay for that student to be able to go to there. Um, unique scenario where there were multiple counties involved. It was a foster situation, um, where their best interest determination is, is for the student to remain, um, being educated in, out of county, uh, because of their acclimatization to that program. So we, because of the court order, um, were required to transport and educate that child at off, even though we offer similar programming.
Is that something that would be able to be publicly available to, do you think? Or is that just?
The, the agreements, yes, not the individual, like, the specifics with the student, no.
No, 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 I mean, like, the, the agreements itself, like, the cost of these agreements.
Absolutely. I mean, their, their, their agreements typically either outline what the daily rate is, and/or if there's a, like, a semester tuition, whatever it may be, that's usually on the agreement itself. Um, but we can definitely make that.
Yeah, I think it would help the public if, if anybody's really interested in seeing where their money is going.
Yes.
This would be a, a place to look, I think. I mean, it's, it's, it's a significant amount. So, thank you. Anybody else like to discuss any of this?
Yeah. I totally agree with those two guys. Uh, it'd be similar to an audit, I believe, and that's, uh, people should know where their money's going. There's no question about it. It's public funds, taxpayer dollars. I totally agree with you, you folks, on this subject.
Okay, thank you. Any, anyone else? Okay. All in favor of, um, approving items five, A through C, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We will move to number six, which is personnel. So we have item six, A, personnel agenda items. A little light compared to last time. Uh, we have B, superintendent evaluation and raise. C, assistant superintendent of elementary evaluation and raise. D, assistant superintendent of secondary evaluation, raise and goals. And lastly, under E, uh, we have the um, uh, administration recommends the attached ESS substitute teacher, classroom monitor, and nursing addendum, in which, uh, the rates were listed. Um, just going back through, um, B, I just want to mention, the superintendent received a satisfactory rating for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. As per the contract, board approved the superintendent's and, uh, the superintendent is entitled to a three thousand dollar annual increase effective July first, twenty-twenty-four. In the case of assistant superintendent of elementary, um, she received a satisfactory rating for twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four school year, as per her contract, board approved. Uh, an assistant superintendent of elementary raise of three percent, effective July first. And lastly, D, um, the assistant superintendent of secondary received a satisfactory rating for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, as per contract, board approved on June nineteenth of twenty-twenty-three, the assistant superintendent is entitled to a three percent increase effective July first, twenty-twenty-four. So, under items six, A through E, I would ask for a motion to approve all of those items, six, A through E. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Would anybody like to discuss any of these items, six, A through E?
Just real quick, I, I know Camilla's gonna retire in, uh, December, but, uh, she's on tonight for, uh, for, for her, uh, uh, retirement, but she's done a heck of a job, and we're, uh, we're very, very fortunate to have her, uh, for how many years, Camilla? And, and I remember she was our, Howard is, uh, weren't you, uh, federal programs? Yeah, and, uh, she's done a great job, and she, she has a great staff, and, uh, and with Sue and everyone in her department. So, Camilla, thanks, and, and good luck. I just don't, I wanted to, I want you at least be recognized for, for a job well done. So, thank you.
I would like to follow up Mr. Francis's comments on that. Uh, my last several years with the district as an employee, she was invaluable to me during negotiations, we had contracts. And our first orientation meeting, Mr. Francis pointed out three people in particular, Mrs. Foreman, Ms. Frank, and Camilla Hoy, to lean on them for help and advice in our new positions. Of course, I listened to him, and I did that. Camilla, you're gonna leave big shoes to fill. Thank you for everything you did for us and your dedication. And it's greatly appreciated. You're gonna be sorely missed. There's one other person that's retiring, folks, who is also on the list, and it's Mr. Christopher Horton. I've known Chris since we were in elementary school, and he was hired by the district in nineteen eighty-one. Mr. Bill Hess was then director of maintenance. After eight years of working with maintenance, Chris went from custodial to tradesman to other jobs. But as events were starting to gather at Mansion Park, Bill Hess realized he needed somebody to run the place. And Mr. Horton was given that job. He's retiring. In fact, his last day is, is this Wednesday. And to all the other custodians, labors, HVAC people, trademen, and everybody else that worked for him, I speak for all of them when I say we wish him the best of luck as well. Thank you very much for that time.
Yeah, I would, I would just follow up, Camilla, you know, in, in a, in previous company, had the opportunity to do business with you, and I can say that, um, you watched uh, the, the, the the district's money better than anyone can ever. I mean, uh, you, you held our company accountable. Uh, the level of detail you got into was amazing, and you, and, and you were just tenacious in, 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 uh, making sure that all, all the money spent by the district was, was spent correctly and well, um, accounted for everything. And I, I think we're fortunate. I think, how many accountants are in the staff, the business? There's a couple, right? There's several. And I think in a lot of places, there's just business people, but to have accountants, like, I'm in business, I know the power of accountants, and to have them serve our school district is a huge advantage, and I, I think it goes, um, underappreciated, but, um, I appreciate the leadership you provided to them and, and all the work you've done. There's no better steward of the district's money than you, so. Thank you. So that being said, anybody else?
Um, I have, well, I mean, I'd reiterate those sentiments too, but, um, I have a question. The, um, how many ACA classes are being taught after school? Do we know?
Mark, you know the exact number, but I know it's very limited.
Yeah, I, I believe currently, we have six classes that are gonna be taught. It will change. Um, it's kind of as more students sign up for ACA or switch to ACA, um, we will be picking up more after-school ACA classes.
Okay. And the majority of teachers that are teaching, are they teaching multiple classes, or one class, or?
No, I, I would say a majority of them have one, some might have two. Um, I, I don't believe there's anyone that has three in their schedule during the day.
Okay. Um, and then sorry, I had another question. Um, can you guys explain, like, what the tier one, tier two, and tier three are for the ESS?
So when we looked at restructuring, um, our ESS agreement and looking at payment, we're trying to kind of do two things. One, we're trying to attract substitutes, more and more substitutes at a competitive rate. Um, it's basically, it's more, most of it's based on how many days they sub. So, for example, a tier one sub would be days one to thirty. Once you've subbed more than thirty days, you become a tier, a tier two sub at thirty-one to sixty days, and then anyone above sixty, sixty days, sixty-one and above would be your tier three. So we are acknowledging, um, time service, and we're encouraging people to take more days as they become available to help fill our, our gaps and our vacancies. The other piece that we did is we're expanding to, uh, include classroom monitors, which does not have the educational requirement, um, quite that a, a, a tiered substitute would have. Um, but they do have the same authority level and responsibility in the classroom. They just don't have as much education or certification to be able to serve in that capacity. So our guest teachers and certified teachers that are substitutes are in that, that tier one, tier two, three, and then our classroom monitors would be, would be the other, the other tier.
So, can the classroom monitor take on a class, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they can do a day-to-day sub. Um, they have the same level of responsibility and authority that, go ahead. They couldn't serve in a long-term capacity.
Okay.
They couldn't, wh- which would be required of a longer-term substitute.
Okay, so, one other question. When we hire a full-time substitute, like, we have on the agenda tonight, is that person being paid by us, the district, or is it through ESS?
They are district employees. So when they're a long-term or a full-time substitute, they are, they're district employees. So they are hired at instructor, in- instructor rate, which would be year one, whether they're masters or bachelors.
Okay, so the long-term subs here are basically like day-to-day subs that have served so many days, or?
The long-term subs that we're hiring?
No, the ones that are on, like, the positions that are on the ESS for tonight, that says, like, full-day, long-term substitute teacher.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that, that just means that they've taught more than ninety days?
They would have. So let's say they're filling in for, uh, maybe a medical absence, and that's extended beyond a ninety-day period, and they move into ninety-one. They have the option of either being hired by us.
Okay.
Or they can remain with ESS at that rate.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I was confused about. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Kelly. Any, anyone else? All right. All in favor of approving items six, A through E, under personnel, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to seven, student services. Administration recommends approval of the attached addendum with Presley Ridge Day School in Johnstown, PA, effective June first, twenty-twenty-four. This appears to be something from my table, that, another one of these, uh, ends, um, looking for a motion to approve item seven, A.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Would anybody like to discuss this addendum?
That is one that I had asked about today, and that's the one Brad spoke of earlier, that we are court mandated to do.
Okay. All right. All in favor of approving item seven, A, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to eight, we have under business operations, we have A, um, administration requests and recommends approval of the amendment to the owner engineering agreement with the Eads Group for the Altoona Area High School Inter mural field retaining wall project. Um, the original agreement amount was sixty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Design phase ma- masonry repointing, three thousand, five hundred, construction administration for masonry, repointing, six thousand. The adjusted agreement amount is seventy-nine thousand dollars. Um, the Blair County Tax Claim Bureau has rece- received and is requesting approval of several repos- repository, repository bids is listed. And under C, I believe there were two items, uh, to approve for the capital reserve list of payments. Do I have, uh, can I have a motion to approve items eight, A through C? I will second. Would we like to discuss any of these items?
I, I guess my question would be, I already asked a little bit about this, but the, um, the inter mural field engineering services, how time constricted are we on approving this? Like, would we have time to possibly ask if the city would help us at all?
We can ask. Um, the city's already, uh, given us an initial denial of any kind of responsibility for any of the, uh, the payment. This particular, the extension of, of, of this service agreement would be for the piece that extends from where the wall crumbled at roughly the thirty-yard line facing the CTC around through to Sixth Avenue. So the pieces, it would be more maintenance and, and repointing, along with the, the sidewalk on Fifth Avenue. This engineering and scope of this engineering piece would be extended into that additional part of the project that was in, that was an add, that was an alternative when we approved the bid. Is that correct? Okay. We could, we can definitely ask.
Okay, so I guess if it was an alternative, why didn't they give us the costs then of what it would, like, these additional costs?
And Sue, correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially, um, when the scope of the work that was bid came back, the scope was, was larger from a design standpoint than had originally been spec. Is that, is that accurate?
Seventy-three thousand dollars, but their purpose was over sixty-nine-five, because at that time, we were only looking at the crumble portion of the wall. So we did technically approve the thirty-five thousand dollars already. I'm just getting the specifics of it, increase the purchase. The six thousand dollars was extended.
What's basically is that, is that six thousand? What's that for? I, I know it says administration for masonry. Is that what it is? Is it an administrative cost?
So they, they're gonna go and do the inspections on the project. So throughout the phase, JCR was awarded the contract, so the engineering team from Eads will go over and make sure that they're compliant with the bid specifications.
Uh, I still think that someone was responsible when that was built, that we shouldn't have to put the whole bill. Uh, whoever was the, uh, architect, contractor, whatever it was, someone should be responsible, and we shouldn't foot that bill. Is there any recourse? We could take it off, Carl?
I know that we had talked about this previously. I would have to go back. I believe I weighed in before on this issue. There are a lot of public comments and discussions over that. Um, and quite honestly, I would have to look at it again.
Uh, it, it just seems that, you, you know, it's we, we're not at fault, you know, whoever did the, uh, the, the architecture, the contract, whoever it was, they're at fault. We're not, it's not our fault. It, it should have been looked at before, and it's just, I don't know, I just think that we end up paying, and, and I don't know if we're afraid to go after people, we don't want to go after people, but I, I think if we have an opportunity to go after somebody, let's go after them.
Okay, um, I guess we have to go through with the motion is to see if it passes, and if it doesn't, we could go back and table an individual.
I would say that you have to inquire of your director of facilities, if time is of the essence, because um, with anything else, a- any type of, uh, land development plan or anything that you're gonna undertake here in the city, it's, it's very clear that, um, either they're gonna come in and oversee certain things, but since they are determining, the city is determining it's your responsibility as a result of the wall. In that, in other words, you bought everything else in the eyes of the city. Uh, you are responsible for the oversight of this particular phase of the project. If the director of facilities believes I didn't capture that correctly, speak now or forever hold your peace.
Does it need to happen now, Trevor, or we don't have a month? Okay. So, if we don't have a month, I think the best action would be to take action on this. That doesn't mean we don't have any recourse to pursue something else if we wanted, uh, you know, to, to go through the process of determining if there's any liability from anybody who's worked on this in the past. I don't think by doing this, it delays anything. Um, if anybody dis- if anybody disagrees with me.
I, I agree. You know, I, I'm, personally, I'm against it, but we have to do it. We have to get it through, so.
Anybody else like to discuss this? If, no, I don't.
Just for clarification, Sue, with this increase, it does not exceed our not-to-exceed amount, correct, for the total project?
First, thirty-nine hundred dollars. Six thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Dave?
Wall itself, we look like our grand. And then, uh, in the, the grandchildren, they go coming.
Anybody else? Okay, all in favor of approving items A, A through C, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I'm a no on A.
Okay. Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to nine, committee reports, committee chair reports. Does anybody leading any committee have any reports? No. B, board president's report. I have none. C, I would like to welcome our student representative for this year, Gracie Jiosa, so we will, uh, appreciate you showing up, even though you didn't have school today. So, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gracie Josa, and I'm proud to be your student representative for the Altoona School Board this year. At Altoona, where I'm entering my senior year, I participate in cross-country swimming, student journalism, and student government. As the vice president for the class of twenty-twenty-five, I'm excited to inform the board and community about the activities, concerns, and achievements of Altoona students. Some notable upcoming events include this upcoming Thursday, August twenty-second, elementary and high school students will have their first day of school. Later that day, beginning at four fifteen, high school students and their parents are invited to come to the auditorium in order to participate and meet the teacher night. On Friday, August twenty-third, the football team will begin their season at Mansion Park Stadium, where they take on crosstown rivals Holidaysburg. The theme is beach, and kickoff is at seven. Season tickets will continue to be sold for the price of twenty-five dollars at the AHS Athletic Office from eight to eleven-thirty AM and twelve-thirty to two-thirty PM through the twenty-third. Additionally, all sports season passes, as well as senior citizen lifetime passes, are now available at the AHS Athletic Office. Both passes are accepted for all AHS and AAJHS regular season home games. The all-sports season pass price for adults is fifty dollars and twenty dollars for students. In order to receive a senior citizen lifetime pass, you must apply in person, provide proof of being at least sixty-two years old, and live in the Altoona Area School District. On Friday, September sixth, the On Friday, September sixth, the A H S alumni association is welcoming two hundred and seventy-four former Altoona majorette, soapcore color guard twirlers and band members for the two thousand twenty-four alumni band day. Their performance directed for what may be the last time by A H S band director, Mr. Larry Detwiler, will be done at halftime during the gold ribbon game against Cumberland Ballet. Girls tennis will start their season on Wednesday with a home match against Mifflin County. Matches will begin at three thirty. Boys soccer will be heading to Indiana on Friday, August twenty-third to participate in the Indiana tournament. This is a two-day tournament. On Fri- on Friday, August twenty-third, girls soccer will open their season against North Allegheny at North Allegheny. Thank you all for your time. We go to B V I, um, September fourth, I think?
All right. Thanks, Gracie. That's a strong first showing. Way to go. All right. Um, next we'll move to Mr. Hatch. Any superintendent's report?
Just very briefly, and Gracie, I want to welcome you to, to our board and thank you for, as, as Mr. Mignone said, a wonderful opening report. Uh, we welcomed our staff and students back to, to the district today. Um, had a very positive, uh, opening day and welcome. So I'd like to thank all of our staff members. I know the anxiety and the nervousness of, of coming back first day was there for everyone, including me. Um, you know, after traveling about two thousand miles yesterday and fifteen hours, uh, I, I had those opening day jitters myself. Um, so again, I want to thank all of our staff for being, uh, very welcoming and excited uh, to return for the start of this school year. And we, we look forward to welcoming our students back on Thursday and we are looking forward to an extremely positive year. One thing I would just like message to parents, um, we are very much stressing engagement and attendance this year. So want to encourage all of our parents to be talking with their students about the importance of not only showing up at school and being engaged in your education, but also playing a very active role in, in, in taking part of all of the opportunities that we have here in the Altoona area school district. So again, uh, welcome, Gracie, and welcome to all of our students on Thursday. And a special thank you and welcome to our staff that returned today. Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Okay. Moving on to ten, do we have an employee union's response? No? Do we have a middle management response or statement? No? All right. Our esteemed solicitor, Mr. Beard.
Real quick, uh, we did put out, uh, the newsletter and I know that Mr. Hatch sent it out. Uh, what's coming up September eleventh, if, uh, which is our special ed symposium, once again, going to be hosted by I, IU eight. Uh, the emphasis is, uh, knowledge is, is power with the theme of, uh, cost containment, uh, efficiency, and basically avoiding landmines and litigations because the very nature of, uh, special education i- is a high cost factor. And the theme this year is trying to bring a bunch of individuals in who have, uh, you know, seen these things unfold in a lot of different forums and are going to provide practical suggestions, uh, recommendations to help a- avoid situations that ultimately cost money. Uh, it's, once again, uh, if you serve in an L E A in any capacity, uh, at, you know, as a principal and serve as an L E A, uh, just hearing these people share, uh, insight and wisdom, I think you have just, uh, with three of the speakers, close to a hundred years of experience. I, I think it, it's, it's a great, uh, program to attend and it's going to be done uh, virtually. So people can stay in the confines of their, uh, office and, uh, participate as well. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beard. All right. We're at the end of our agenda. So I'm seeking a motion to adjourn this meeting. I did not. The crafty veteran. I should note that prior to this meeting, we had a, an executive session to discuss personnel issues. Thank you. Would I have been thrown in jail for that?
No. No.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dave. All right. Seeking a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.